to go to, so I bless you all.
Thank you.
Next, a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, unafraid, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Recognition of gifts, donations, and community service. Does anybody have anything? I do have something on the couple of meetings ago, we had the recognition of AmeriPrize that donated to the Fireman's Park. Actually, that was Jim and Jenny Broad that donated that, but it came through as AmeriPrize. So I told them that I would take care of that for him. So. Anything else? I have a public comment. Chief Gibson.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As I try to do every other time we hire a new officer, like to bring them before you, introduce you to them. Eamon McCormick is our newest hire. He's actually been working with us or for us for a bit here, but was recently sworn in, actually yesterday, and he's a lifelong resident of Hutchinson. And I think he plans on staying here for a while. So I'll let him introduce himself. And then if you guys wish to ask me any questions, or if he has anything for you guys, he can take care of that. Thanks.
Good evening, everyone. First of all, I'd like to thank you all for having me here tonight and for the chief inviting me. As chief introduced me, I'm Officer Eamon McCormick. Been a lifelong resident here my whole life, grew up here. Started in August as a part-time police officer, and then beginning of this month, I started as full-time. Graduated from Hutchinson High School, twenty twenty, and then I went to Alexandria Technical Community College for Law Enforcement Program and graduated this last May. I have to say, it's an honor and privilege to be able to work in my hometown community and be able to give back to citizens that live within it, and I'm excited to see what my career holds. And if I see each and one of you out on the streets, don't be afraid to say hi to me, and I'd be more than happy to have a conversation with you. So you have any questions at all from here?
I have one comment. I like your hairstyle. He's in chief.
You haven't told them about my ball jokes at their city recognition events, did you? Because we've got, we've got plenty of us here, so.
Don't worry, it's overrated.
Well, if you're as helpful at the police department as you were at the hardware store for so many years, we're lucky to have you. So you're my go-to guy over there for years. So, you know, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
And I know you were involved, I've been involved with the Elks, and we gave out a scholarship to you. So it's glad to see you was there and came back and welcome back. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thanks, thank you. Citizens addressing the council, please come forward, say your name and address. Already approval of minutes, we have regular meeting minutes of February fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Pat, second by Dave to approve the minutes. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Consent agenda will be done by one motion unless somebody pulls something off for a discussion. A is approval of the memorandum of agreement with the MNPEA Police Officers Union. B is approval of authorizing committal letter for the EV electric vehicle smart program. C is approval of sunsetting the City of Hutchinson COVID preparedness plan. D is approval of purchase of a two thousand twenty-three John Deere six-one-nine-five M tractor for Creekside. E is approval of resolution number one-five-five-seven-one. Resolution adopting finding of facts and reason for approval of the conditional use permit for office space in a industrial commercial zone district located at seven fifty-six Century Avenue Southwest with Flavourable Planning Commission recommendation. Act is claims appropriation and contract payments. Anything anybody wants pulled off?
I'll make a motion to approve it as presented. Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Pat to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. We have a public hearing at six, so let's move on down. Communication requests, invitations, half nothing, unfinished business, nothing, new business. Resolution number one-five-five-seven-zero, resolution establishing recreation program position and amending classification table and seasonal temporary pay table.
I'll start it and let Lynn fill in. Some of you may or may not know, and as some of the members of the community may or may not know, we have two long-term employees that are retiring within the parking recs department. Next month, I'll let Lynn go into that a little bit detail. And so with that, there's some restructuring that's taking place. Most of it just has to do with kind of title changes. But this would be an added position of essentially combining two part-time kind of seasonal into one full-time position. That's being recommended. And then just some updates to to the the pay grid and the classification, both seasonal and the regular one, just with some of the changes. And so with that, I guess I'll hand over to Lynn to fill in a little bit more.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Matt pretty much touched on most of the points of why I'm here tonight. But we do have two long-term employees retiring here in March. Marv Haugen, who served as our Recreation Facilities Operations Manager for forty-two and a half years, will be retiring on March tenth. And then John McGrath, who served as our Recreation Services Coordinator for the last forty-one years, will be retiring on March twentieth. These are two really, really significant positions that do a lot of things for the PRCE department. So if you do see them out and about, please extend your congratulations to them. As we are sad to see them go because that is a lot of experience, eighty-plus years walking out the door within one month for us. So we're sad to see them leave, but very exciting times for them moving on in their retirement years. And I'm sure you'll see them around. They'll still be around. But yes, please extend, extend a huge congratulations to them. With that, we will be filling both of their positions. There was some position title changes that we currently have out for applications, and they close tomorrow, March first, for those two positions. In addition to that, we identified a need in our department to create a new position, and Matt had touched on it, that it's taking two current part-time positions that we currently have, combining them into one. And so it would currently be our Aquatics Center Manager position, which is a seasonal full-time position that usually starts in April and runs through the end of the aquatic season. But that is a full-time seasonal position that we currently have. And then also combining a vacant position that we currently have as a part-time rec specialist. It's been vacant for a little while. After an employee left, we didn't fill the position in hopes that we could combine these two positions into a full-time position when the retirements happened. So it'd be taking those two positions and combining them into one. That position would be called the Recreation Programmer, and included in the packet is the job description that is being proposed for that position. So those job duties would then fall under the realm of that new position, and they would report directly to the new Recreation Manager position, which was previously held by John McGrath. So a couple of different changes. And then with that, just to align, to make everything uniform in our department, there's a just a name and title switch for our current parks supervisor to change to be called our Parks Manager, just to align with some positions and have uniformity across our department for our scale and for our flow chart for our department. Do you want me to touch on the ones that Kelly had put in here?
No.
Okay.
Hey, there's any questions?
Any questions?
And I would say there's one other position which you were referring to from Kelly was that we just missed in December when we updated our previous scale. And so we had forgot that one position had changed due to some duty changes, and we just hadn't included that. Hadn't included that, so we want to do that at this point.
If you throw a dolphin there, we've lost a hundred and twenty years of experience and two years over there.
We've lost a lot of great experience, but hopefully we'll gain some great new additions to our department here in the future.
We have.
You know, and I will say, just to be fully transparent, especially with this position, we do have somebody already identified that we would be looking to basically promote them from the seasonal part-time into the full-time position, so.
Any other questions for Lynn?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
Motion by Chad, second by Pat to approve resolution number one-five-five-seven-zero. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. There are two projects being considered at the airport for two thousand twenty-three. LED airfield lighting as the first priority and a here construction, and that's second priority.
Yeah. And and the reason this came in a little later, or in a little more of a rush than I was expecting is that some of the deadlines have changed through FAA. And I think it's in part because they're running two different programs right now. They're running the non-primary entitlement program, which is the usual one. But then there's also a bipartisan infrastructure law funding on top of that. So actually, the two projects we're looking at take advantage of both of those funding sources. The first project and the highest priority project is the is to change out the runway lighting that's about thirty years old. It's incandescent bulbs on all of the lighting at the airfield. We'd like to transition to LED lighting along that with that. Then you get some solid-state controls, some different more little things like moving the beacon and and to a spot where we can actually maintain it and get to it and just tip it over and fix it and put it back up again. So there's a number of of parts of the project that just improve longevity with LED lighting of how long they run, and then also reducing the operating costs of the electricity used and the maintenance costs getting in there. So what we would be looking to do is roughly nine hundred thousand dollar project. Ninety percent of that would be funded through FAA, which is eight hundred and some thousand. And we already have five hundred and just shy of five hundred and fifty thousand of that. And we're asking for the rest of it to through state apportionment funding. If that is approved, that would, really, we wouldn't have to pay anything back. It's very high on the safety list to replace lighting. So we're hopeful that we'll be able to get that two hundred and sixty thousand of that. Eight hundred and ten would be from state apportionment funding that FAA gives Minnesota each and every year. If it isn't, it's still possible to do a transfer of non-primary entitlement from a different airport and still complete the project. We would just have to pay that two hundred and sixty back in the future, which pushes us out a little bit further to pick up our next project. So and and one of the things that's different about how we do everything else based on on engineer's estimates here, you know, getting to a point where we approve a project, all that FAA does it only on a bid. So that's why we need to go out for the bids to do to take a look at these two projects. The second project, and this is hopefully something that will work, is using our bipartisan infrastructure law money to construct a couple more hangars. City-owned hangars for rental. And these would be two larger hangars. They would be fifty-six by fifty-two and sixteen-foot door clearance to handle many twin-engine aircraft, larger aircraft. I could foresee, you know, knowing what happens at Hutchinson. It's likely a spray plane would end up in there at some point. So that's the size of hangar we're going for is pretty, pretty substantial-sized hangar. We're looking at two of them. They'd just be plain old box hangars, basically three walls and a door. That's about it, and cold storage on concrete floor. And we're hoping to utilize the bipartisan infrastructure law money as the federal match for that. If we're able to do that, we would need to figure out an upfront piece of roughly seven hundred thousand dollars because we would use future years' payments to pay that interfund loan back. So we're still working on those details, but unless we get a bid in hand, we won't know if this is even feasible. Again.
Yeah, I mean, we'd put roofs on those hangars.
Yeah, 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 there'd be a tin roof on there.
I was just thinking you said.
Yep, yep. So but the idea is we get roughly a hundred and forty-five thousand. I think we got a hundred and fifty-six thousand the first year and then a hundred and forty-five thousand for five years. So it would be to utilize that, those funds. And we'd be kind of interfund loaning the twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six payments to make that happen. So I guess I would recommend approving authorization to bid the projects, and from there, we will keep plugging away and see if we can pull this off.
But I know the lighting system is kind of a priority because you've been limping that one along for quite a while.
Yeah, one of the problems we have is the bulbs are so old and the the style is so old that typically manufacturers don't run them, except in a one-run maybe per year. So we've had to really go on the hunt to find these thirty and forty-five watt bulbs and going to LED. In fact, in cases where when we can't get the bulbs, we've actually put in several halogen kits because we just flat out can't get those bulbs. We didn't find another batch of them here not too long ago, so we we got a few in a box up on the shelf. But yeah, it gets to be a challenge, more of a challenge each and every year, so.
Say, John, you know, I think when somebody looks at, you know, potentially two projects like like this and and they see, you know, we're going to have about one, potentially one point six million dollars from
Sure.
from the FAA or I think the state. Can you maybe just talk about how how that funding is allocated? I think most people look, you know, kind of Hutchinson, we're going to get one point six million for our airport.
Yeah, well, each each year, we we are, we receive a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of non-primary entitlement. So non-primary airports that are in the national program, integrated airports. Each year, each of those airports receive an amount of funding. And so we can bank that funding up to a certain level, usually right around the four hundred and fifty thousand dollar mark. And then you can, so you can theoretically use a larger, little bit larger project. So if you see in there, you know, that's where our five hundred and fifty thousand is. That came from three years of NPE entitlement plus what we had left over in after paying back after building the last hangar. So that's kind of that program in itself. And then like, again, as I mentioned, there's a five-year program that's on top of that through the bipartisan infrastructure law that gave us a hundred and fifty-six thousand the first year, a hundred and forty-five thousand for four years. And that amount is, again, you can utilize that. And and the reason we would like to utilize that money for the hangars is because we feel like the safety. We meet a lot of safety criteria by doing a lighting project, so we believe we can get state apportionment money. And if that's the case, then we'll have our, we'll have our next hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we can use even next year. And we do have another project, and it's a safety-related project in mind, filling in some of the the more steeper ditches between the runway and the taxiway to help with if we do have aircraft that deviate there. In the past five to seven years, we've had about three aircraft that have deviated off there. And then what happens is they go nose-down in the ditch, and then the props hit the back in slope of the opposite part of the ditch. And, you know, they're not, they're not built for that, those propellers aren't. So it's a little stress on the front of the airplane. So we're looking at a project like that, and by using this mix of funding, we believe we can, we can have a good shot at making that happen sooner than later, so.
Then, John, we can borrow funds from other airports.
Yes, correct. Yeah, and we've, inside Minnesota, we're quite good at it. Minnesota Council of Airports, the different airport engineering firms that are out there work together quite well. And we have borrowed non-primary money to different airports over the years. We've borrowed money from different airports over the years. The last time was when we built the our hangar five, our newest hangar. We borrowed money from several different airports and and took, as we received those entitlements back, then we distribute them back to those airports, so. Makes it line up easier to do projects and takes advantage of the federal funding that that is assigned to Minnesota.
Any other questions for John?
Need a motion?
Yes.
Motion to approve the Public Works Engineering to authorize to advertise for bids for two thousand twenty-three airport improvements. Second.
Motion by Pat, second by Tim to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried.
Thank you.
We still have five minutes to our public hearing, so if you wanted to clean up the rest of the agenda, then we can go back out soon.
Very governance. We have minutes, reports from committees, boards, or commissions. We have Hutchinson Library Board minutes from November twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two. Planning and commission minutes from December twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two. Hutchinson Housing RE Development Authority Board minutes from January seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three. City of Hutchinson Financial Investment Reports for January of two thousand twenty-three. Chief Gibson, you got anything else for us tonight?
One minute.
Okay.
So if you guys aren't aware, we are revamping our policy and procedure manual this year. Complete overhaul, using Lexipol, a company that specializes in that type of thing. But because of that, our rule, our our policy says, as you're probably well aware, you have to review it or have the opportunity to comment on it at two different council meetings. So we're nearing fifty percent completion. It's going to result in a little bit of homework for you guys, so I just want to prepare you for that. It's usually about a three-hundred-and-some-page document, so we'll try to, we're going to try to do it in increments. I think we're probably twenty-five percent there, so.
It takes a ninety percent completion on the test, right, to move forward with it?
Right.
For the council members.
There will be a written test afterwards. So just so you're aware, you'll probably be seeing that sometime in the near future in the council packets. And probably twenty-five percent of it, and we'll do it in twenty-five percent increments, hopefully. Right? That's all I have.
When's the last time we did this?
Never, to my recollection.
I don't remember everything.
We, you know, as we over the last couple of years, there's been a lot of mandatory policy changes from the state that you've probably reviewed, but complete overhaul of the policy manual has never happened to my knowledge.
Is it as exciting as Andy's budget book? That's great stuff.
Yeah, I think it'd be a little bit deeper reading in there, but probably not as complex.
Sure.
God, I didn't think you were going to bring that up.
That's all I have, thanks.
Thanks, chief. Andy, you got anything for us?
I do not.
Lynn?
I'll be Mark.
Okay. Mike? John, anything else? Excellent. And I see the guys are out clearing some drains, huh?
Yes, in parking lots and, yeah. We're hoping for a long warm, long warming period.
Yeah. Cold, cold, yes, that'd be great.
It'd be a wet, messy spring.
Mr. Sabora, you have anything?
I think nice.
Chad?
Nothing.
Tim?
All good?
Damn.
Absolutely all good.
All right. Pat?
Just to caution people about with this weather, the slipperiness. Actually, short story, I mean, I'm killing time, you should get to hearing them. Took my wife to work on Tuesday morning, and then we walked out the back door, and she held my hand. She said, let's go back inside because there were steps like, so be careful. It's like skating rinks out there everywhere. That's it.
That's it?
That's it.
Cool.
Matt?
I just have a more or less just a reminder for the negotiating committee that we do have our sardines mediation this Friday at nine here at City Center. Otherwise, that's that's it for me as well, so.
Since nobody else talked, I can't really say nothing, I guess. So let's go back to our public hearing. Assessment hearing and project awards for Roberts Road Southwest Project. That's lighting number one, project number twenty-three dash oh one. There's resolutions underneath there. Resolution number one-five-five-seven-two, resolution accepting bids and awarding contract. And resolution number one-five-five-seven-three, resolution adopting assessments.
Mr. Mayor and Council, give me a second here. I've got two presentations for the two assessments, and I think you've probably seen versions of both prior. We just have updated information and just kind of a good review again, too. So so I'll be bringing them up here in one second. Is that right? Is that on also?
We're just seeing how you act under pressure.
Awkward silence.
This has happened before, hasn't it?
Acted right.
Yeah.
There we go.
They should be set, so we will start with Roberts. For clarification, should I go through both of them or do?
I'll do the first one.
Through the one and then go according to.
Yep, we'll have our action note with that one, and then we'll do a second.
Go onto the second one. Perfect. So again, this first one here for Roberts Road. Again, you likely know this is a continuance of the two thousand seventeen project. So this summer's project will start at Dale and go to Allen Street. A little bit of a shot there, giving you an idea of how that lays out. Again, for the most part, a complete redo of the street. Water main will be done throughout the project itself. And then final paving, I should add, gets done in two thousand twenty-four. And part of that, again, the reason is we expect or anticipate some settling of the road surface in that time, so they'll allow us to properly pave the road in two thousand twenty-four. Again, currently a transitional curve that winds out at the original street width just east of Allen Street Southwest. This curve line will be straightened out to accommodate the trail construction. That will be done on the north side of the street, replacing the concrete surface that's already there. Big concern here always will be access to the project itself. So again, Kay and Larson Streets, there'll be access from the north and south portions of the area. And then two cul-de-sacs, of course, that are affected, Hidden Circle and Global also is part of it. So access will be, for the most part, a consideration for the contractors during the project itself. So really, all emergency vehicle acts. So um really, all emergency vehicle access and access will be granted, except probably when water main is going in and paving operations itself. So that will be somewhat a limiting factor during it, but the contractor is aware of that in both of those cases. So Hidden Circle as well as then Global Circle Southwest. So there will be some short periods of disruption with that. The slight curve that I think everyone in the community is accustomed to, um as it comes onto Dale Street, um that will be maintained with a little bit of transition on that north curve line. Um there's a little bit of work and adjustment that's getting done on that portion of it. As you can see there, kind of that northeast portion. Um but again, that median will be rebuilt and put back in place. Finally, numbers and these are updated here. We got very favorable bids. We're about fifteen percent below um the engineer's estimate of. Um again, this is a qualifying project for municipal state aid. So again, as you can see, a good majority of the funding comes from it. Um and then um some water funds, stormwater wastewater funds, the G O or General Obligation Improvement Bond, and then assessments that will come for about twenty percent of it. Um one point nine, approximately one point eight six seven, as you'll see, um which again is uh well under the estimate we had at the time. And these are the two areas, I have two slides here. Highlighted areas are the assessable properties. And this is the eastern portion of that project.
And Mike, those that aren't being assessed have either corner credits or backyards, I suppose, so.
Other credits, yeah, exactly. Generally, corner credits, as you'll see there, that offset. And that is it. Any questions or any of the slides I should go back to or that you'd like to see?
Mayor, Council for the public, um obviously in front of the council for consideration tonight is uh accepting of the to the benefiting properties. Um I guess this is one of, this is the the moment for um public comment. And so I'd ask the council to go um into a a public hearing. Um and then that would give the public uh an opportunity to to provide comment or ask questions on the project and or uh the assessments that are are proposed to be levy against their the different properties.
All righty, we'll open it up for public comment. Uh just come forward, state your name and address.
Make a motion to close the hearing. Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Pat to close the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, carried.
Make a motion to approve both resolutions.
Motion by Chad, second by Dave to approve both resolutions. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. All right, assessment hearing for Jefferson Street Southeast, letting number four, project number twenty-three dash oh five. And underneath there is a resolution number one five five seven four, resolution adopting assessments.
Ready here, so Mr. Mayor and Council, this is uh for Jefferson Street. As you've mentioned, um the city portion is the Airport Road uh through Edmonton Avenue. Um this project's being done in conjunction with McCloud County. Um as of right now, they have not let this project. So again, until um they decide to proceed, and it does look like it's progressing. So we anticipate um moving forward here this year with it. Um but as of right now, it has not been um bid at this point. So some of the numbers we will show at this point are tentative. Um again, our portion runs from the north um with the anticipated roundabout at um Airport Road and Jefferson. The county will be doing some work all along Jefferson, or excuse me, Airport Road. Um but they'll also be doing a portion to the south um as shown here. Um again, kind of writing yourself uh as would look opposite, at least for myself in in that case. So um keep in mind, our portion is the lower portion um the widening of. And then the biggest thing there, too, is the addition of a trail section that will run along the the road um there. The street section self continues north to the intersection of uh Toronto Boulevard. Um again, access for residents um will occur off of Ottawa um just to the west. Um and then um through um the area, uh again, with the addition of the walkway, there'll be some also patching and some other work that will get done um just to make the proper transitions um throughout pedestrian ramps, et cetera. The funding here, again, as is shared, um this again, uh in this case, is a general obligation improvement bond. We'll take care of the majority of it, a bit of stormwater contributions and then assessments. And in this case, we have two properties um that are being assessed, as shown again in the highlighted. Again, those to the north um all have rear yards, so um do not have um assessment along the Jefferson Street portion of itself. So you'll see the two other properties noted otherwise. If you have any questions.
Once again, Mayor, Council and the public, similar to the the previous hearing, this is a opportunity for the public to provide comment input to the city council on the proposed um at least our portion of the proposed project, along with uh the assessment and ask the council to consider opening up for a public comment.
Open up for public comment?
Make a motion to close the hearing. Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Pat to close the public hearing. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried.